Okay, I'll entertain a motion to open the zoning board of appeals.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Emile?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's take up the first case. I still want...
Okay, you don't have to read that in.
First case is 4306, which is Costco Wholesale Corp.
Motion open case number 4306.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Emile? Unanimous.
And if one of the members of the public, John Alvarado, who I know is there for Costco, if you could just confirm that you're able to see the slideshow, right now, should show the cover slide of Costco?
Hey, yeah, I can see it on the screen.
Thank you.
You have to turn on my call.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin Goggan, here on behalf of Costco. With me this evening virtually is John Alvarado, Director of Real Estate Development for Costco. To my right is John Harder, Senior Vice President, Atlantic Traffic and Design. And to his right is Steve Glawacki, the Associate Principal at RJ O'Connell. You may recall that we were before you on April 4th. We presented the initial plans that we had for the proposed fuel facility to be added to a parcel immediately adjacent to the existing Costco warehouse. During that meeting, we received several comments from members of the board. We had our homework to do. We went out and did those, and tonight, we'd like to present them to you, hopefully to resolve any remaining concerns you have. We'll go through a quick project overview. We'll go specifically for the response to comments. The three items that we had noted based on our last hearing were circulation, signage, and public safety. We'll also reiterate the compliance with the special permit criteria and take any questions at the end. Of course, if there are any questions in the interim, please feel free to let us know. As I mentioned, I'm going to turn this over to John Harder in a moment, who's going to be able to walk you through some of the improvements in the traffic engineering. But as I mentioned, there were comments that we, the last time we presented, you'll see we had this left turn-in with these parking spaces here to the fuel facility, and we had these, this aisle here where you had the horizontal spaces. Those were some of the items that you picked up on last time, and you asked us to address again to consider diagonal parking and one-way movement in the aisle, signage to provide additional detail of how we were going to try to control traffic movement, and public safety, you asked us to talk to both the fire department and the police department, the safety officers with both, to confirm that the plans were acceptable.
Everybody, in the screen, I just seen the first page. So I don't see the actual presentation, so Emile, that is part of the, I mean, of the board, I don't know if you're seeing the same thing, because you're pointing at something, and we're just seeing the first, the first page of the presentation.
See, we can...
I see one part of the presentation, but I'm not sure if he was pointing.
No, we haven't started anything yet.
Oh, okay, good. Sorry, I'm just a little confused. My apologies.
So, right now, are you able to see the prior site plan? And then the right-hand side, you'll see comments from the board, circulation, signage, and public safety?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, that was the last plan that we went through, and we're going to turn over to how things have changed. And again, I'll hand it over to John Harder from here. Move to the, to the next slide, so you can see some of the changes made.
Should I use the cursor, or just?
Cursor.
I did bring my highlighter. Okay.
So, right now, are you able to see the prior site plan? And then the right-hand side, you'll see comments from the board, circulation, signage, and public safety?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, that was the last plan that we went through, and we're going to turn over to how things have changed. And again, I'll hand it over to John Harder from here. Move to the, to the next slide, so you can see some of the changes made.
Should I use the cursor, or just?
Cursor.
I did bring my highlighter. Okay.
Just to make sure the folks, the folks online can see it.
Right, okay. Good, so, oh, yes, thank you.
We've hired copies here for you. So, in this package, you'll see you have a hard copy of the revised OS-1. We've also provided copies of some of the truck turning radars that we were asked to look into, and that we shared with public safety. That would be the fuel truck, as well as, I believe, the largest fire truck.
Do you have a copy for Jack?
Yep, we do, we certainly do.
Oh, okay, good.
Sorry, I'm just a little confused. My apologies.
So, right now, are you able to see the prior site plan? And then the right-hand side, you'll see comments from the board, circulation, signage, and public safety?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, that was the last plan that we went through, and we're going to turn over to how things have changed. And again, I'll hand it over to John Harder from here. Move to the, to the next slide, so you can see some of the changes made.
Should I use the cursor, or just?
Cursor.
I did bring my highlighter. Okay.
Just to make sure the folks, the folks online can see it.
Right, okay. Good, so, oh, yes, thank you.
We've hired copies here for you. So, in this package, you'll see you have a hard copy of the revised OS-1. We've also provided copies of some of the truck turning radars that we were asked to look into, and that we shared with public safety. That would be the fuel truck, as well as, I believe, the largest fire truck.
Do you have a copy for Jack?
Yep, we do, we certainly do.
So, go ahead, Kevin.
The board's ready.
Okay, John Harder with Atlantic Traffic presented the last hearing, and the new updated site plan, this is an overview, as you can see, we, just a few points from the last time, we talked about the traffic improvements at the roundabout to gain more capacity. Stockwell Drive, as you proceed east into the site, we're looking to widen that from two lanes to four lanes across to gain more capacity, which would help both Jordan's access, as well as our modified entrance into the site, much improved. As you proceed, the lane adjacent to the double left, it will be a left-only lane with signage indicating such, and that would lead you into the fuel facility. The changes at the south end of the fuel facility, Kevin mentioned, which is removal of the parking within, on the south side of the fueling area, so that's improved to limit any movements in that area. The intersection where that inbound movement occurs for the fuel, and then the outbound, which we're going to talk about more, which is one-way out, we've really simplified compared to today's conditions. Again, there's many conflicts on the cross aisles today. We've also gotten rid of the outside parking, as we talked about, that exists as you enter, so that also helps limit movements as you enter the site. The exit aisle from the fuel was a discussion point last time. It was one-way southbound in the past, but it was perpendicular parking. We now have angled parking to emphasize that one way. The signage has been upgraded in terms of regulatory signage. We can get in a little more detail with that as we zoom in. And as you exit the fuel facility, all traffic is one-way northbound. They must make a right-out, come to a stop, and then either make a right or a left. We've, across from that exiting point, we've put in a raised island, removed parking, so you don't have backup maneuvers into that exiting area. And we'll get into more detail. There's signage added, for guide signage, to give customers a better understanding of where to go from, from that point. In terms of public safety, Kevin touched on that we've communicated with both Captain Rush of the fire department, and a few days ago, we also had a call, Kevin and I, with Detective Sergeant James O'Connor of the police department, and he was also satisfied with, with the changes we were making.
I'm getting worried. Could you jump out of the share and reshare? I think when you advance the slides, it's not showing up to the, to the members on the, on the Zoom, so we may have to just not go into the blow-up view.
One other thing, my try is just to share the whole window.
Entire screen, yeah, maybe.
So, John Alvarado, going to ask you one more time. What you should be seeing is the updated site plan, and then the response to comments on the right-hand side. Do you see that now?
Yes, we do. When you were explaining, I think, I don't know, something was weird, because when you were explaining, I know you were explaining this, this site plan, but we were seeing the pure site plan, but now, now they were good.
And if I change over slides now, do you now see the signage plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks very much.
Good, so Kevin, I think that touched on all the major changes on the plan that we're presenting this evening.
And I should just note that when we did talk to Detective Sergeant O'Connor and Captain Rush, the reason we say preliminary approval there is because they'll have other approvals that they need to give during building permit processes, but for the purposes of zoning board review, they, they found these adequate. The next step that we had, one of the items we wanted to touch on that we can walk through is signage as well, but you should have this updated signage plan in your packet as well. But certainly, we are happy to walk through it if there's any questions on that, or if you'd like us to sort of present how we expect it'll work with signage. I think John touched on most of that.
Yes, today, the site has limited regulatory signage. We're adding, you know, very significant volume of signage in the appropriate MUTCD, Federal Highway Administration standards. That's the guidelines for, for public roadways, and it's also good to use on private property, on private development, such as this. And the guide signs too, maybe we could just point to those, as Kevin here just, when you exit the fuel, as I said, you have to make the right and come to the stop line, and then there is signage directly in front of you. The one to the left will let you know you proceed to your left to go to park and go to Costco Wholesale, or to the right, the sign to your right is exit to IKEA Way or Stockwell Drive, and that will...
That one-way, you wait, that sign backwards?
No, well, when you're looking at it, so...
If you're coming out, that should be pointing that way.
Right, so this is, this is actually on the face, looking east of...
No, I'm looking at the one-way sign right there. Isn't that, isn't that the way out?
That's, so to your right, you would be exiting?
Oh.
It's a bit confusing, I'm sorry.
I have the same problem when I first looked in.
Oh, okay.
But I don't see a one-way for that aisle. Is there a one-way for that aisle?
There's the, there's the ground marking, and then the...
There, there are markings on the pavement, and then, once you're down at the main access driveway, there'll be, as you're coming into the site, so, so you approach the left, you're in the left turn lane, for example, to go in the fuel, you will see two "Do Not Enter" signs on both sides, on either side of that aisle. And then, we'll have one-way signs also on either side of the inbound to the fuel, so it will be very clear what the purpose of the circulation is. And again, we're dealing with, you know, customers that are members, and they're going to, initially, it's going to take some, you know, time to learn the new pattern, but soon after, several weeks in, I think most will, will really readily understand the circulation.
What is the "Do Not Enter" sign, like below the stop sign on the right? Where is that? Where is it telling you not to enter? No, to the far right, that one.
Oh, it's on either side of this, so you have a stop sign on the top side, and then on, on the outside, you have a "Do Not Enter" facing out, to help reemphasize that.
Okay.
And they'll be on separate posts. There's some standards by MUTCD where you really, they don't want you to obscure the shape of the stop sign with the "Do Not Enter," so they would be on separate posts. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you very much. And then, just to touch on the spec...
The girl behind you will be, if she can't transcribe, she's coming up there.
Fair enough. I'm always available, happy to help when I can. And just touching on again, we presented the special permit compliance slide. Last time, it was included in our original packet. We believe we touched on all these and have information where the, the board can make these findings, specifically to traffic flow and safety, and obviously, that was a primary concern of the board last time, and we, we took the comments that we received, implemented those, and as I mentioned, we received approval, preliminary approval, from both the traffic safety officer at the police department and the safety officer at the fire department as well. We'll take questions at this time, happy to, you know, discuss anything or address any concerns. And one other thing I should provide by way of update, that I should have said at the beginning, the last time, I mentioned sort of the roster of approvals that we were going to need for the project. And in the interim between, we first appeared before you and today, we have appeared before the Avon Planning Board. We received a water supply protection district special permit from them at a public hearing of the planning board there, but we also have to go back to the planning board for site plan there. We'll have to go to the conservation commission there for orders of conditions, same as we'll have to do in Stoughton. We'll have to file for an NOI here, and would also have to appear before the planning board for site plan approval as well.
Can you please go back to the criteria slide, please? I only got halfway through reading those.
And you should, this is in your materials too. We did provide, if you have a copy of the original application, it was one of the tabs in there, so if you want to take a look.
It's pretty thick.
It is, it certainly is.
I went through it a couple of times, I didn't see it. Oh, thanks.
It's in the cover letter, too.
If you go to, I know there's a lot there, but it is included as tab 1A.
Which tab did you say?
1A. Yes, sir. It's in there. I like this better, it's more summarized. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Sure.
You know, we talk about, or you talk about these materials, about the beneficial impacts and outweighing, you know, the potential adverse effects, right? I read through the explanations, you know, I face it, seems to make sense, but can you help me understand a little bit about the, the economic benefits and how they might outweigh? Like, for example, when a member uses this fuel station as opposed to another fuel station down the street, how much, how much could they potentially save? Like, how does that work for them? Or are the gas prices pretty much the same?
John Alvarado, are you able to speak to prices?
Yeah, literally. So, what we always try to do is normally, we have, we want to have one of the most competitive prices around us, and that's, I mean, member-based, so we look, I mean, normally, they, the gas, the gas department, they look the prices around us and look for a competitive rate.
And I'd also like to add, from a municipal standpoint, this will increase the real estate tax base, this is, the site of the proposed project is an undeveloped lot, where you'll have additional commercial development to be taxed at a commercial rate. You'll also have solidified, you know, longstanding commercial tenant like Costco, who is, you know, putting this process in nationwide to catch this site up to some of its others. You're also going to have the, during the construction period, you'll have several jobs for, for temporary construction, so those are sort of the impacts too specific to the municipality, as opposed to just an individual or a club member.
Club members are residents too?
And, but they may not be.
Just want to make sure they're getting benefits, right?
They may not be as well, certainly.
Okay, okay.
I can tell you the difference between if they match PJs, you know, hit the UZAP, but if they match BJ's, it's like a 30 cent difference in fuel prices.
Okay. Sounds meaningful. All right.
Your preliminary, oops, sorry. Your preliminary approvals, were that, was that in writing?
Yes, we have an email from the fire department. I'm happy to share that one. I don't know if we have one in writing from the police department. We have an, we have an email that we sent back to the public safety officer, just to confirm the conversation we had. I believe we just said, if this understanding is correct, you know, let us know, but happy to share those as soon, if it would be helpful.
I think we need those for the record.
Sure.
Do you have any questions?
I have, no.
That was all I had.
Emile? Do you have any questions?
No questions.
So, okay. I have a couple of questions on queuing. I don't know how Costco is with pricing and stuff. We're going to come in, go up, come around, and imagine you're going to queue here.
I think they come in straight through what they explained.
Oh, we're going to come this way? Okay. Okay. Also, then you have probably...
Chairman, would you like me to...
Probably enough room for four to five cars to queue before the pumps?
Correct, so the pumps themselves contain 24 fueling positions, which is the standard now. Earlier versions only had 12, so that it's evolved over the years. And so, behind each approach lane, they, our intent is to have at least 100 feet of queuing, and then, so, and then also, the ability of the entrance lane can also accommodate queuing, as well as it feeds into those lanes. So, we really have a very robust stacking area. And just having, the ability of having 24 fueling positions compared to 12, 16, some of the earlier generations, it really helps that, you know, efficiency of moving traffic through.
And also, John, to, I don't know what John's saying, when we have fuel facilities, there are three dispenser, dispensers or more deep, we implemented a lighting system, similar of the, you know, what you see in some parking garages, that will tell you green or red, depending on if the pump is occupied or open. So, in the case that one of the middle fueling position dispensers, it can, becomes open, then you're going to have kind of in the traffic signal, like a green light, and there's enough space on the passing lane between the two dispensers, so that can be accommodated, so you can drive around the other cars. And also, the distance between the dispensers, our earliest sender were 23 feet, and we changed it to 28 feet, so you can pull in in just one movement without any, you know...
No backups, right.
...pre move of parking. So, that, adding what John's saying, the additional capacity to experience what we've done in other fuel facilities, we process cars more, we are quicker, and then we reduce queuing. In cases where, where, I mean, we're basically expanding gas stations, that we have those six dispensers, and we're expanding to queue for that, in places that we're having queuing issues, and to experience, we, I mean, implementing this, the queues are being reduced significantly. So, that's the approach.
Let me just make sure I'm understanding what he's saying.
Oh, sure.
If you have somebody at the pump, and he's at the back pump, now the green light goes on, and he can come to this pump, there's an aisle here, so that he can drive down to it?
Correct, there's a bypass.
Okay.
Each lane has an adjacent bypass lane, so it's unique in the industry. Costco was originally only doing two-deep, and they, they were reluctant to go to three and four, and then they realized greater spacing between the fueling positions, and then the red-green light indications is great, because it enables, it's really when someone in the far positions, you can't see them very well when you're, you're waiting in the queue, and they leave, and then the green indication makes it clear you can proceed. And then, again, no backup movements are necessary, and the, all the hoses are long enough to reach either side of the vehicles.
That's my next question.
Yeah. It's been well thought through, yeah.
You answered my questions.
I just have a question on that.
I do have one other question. You said you're not going to have a place for the guy to stand in, so it's going to be strictly charge, so everybody that's coming up is going to put their charge card in the machine, and take their receipt, and then leave. But you're not going to have somebody at the, at the pumps, you know, that's going to stay at the pump?
Yes, there are attendants.
You have to have somebody...
To assist with the...
Is there a right to cancel this out, Emile? Yeah.
Okay, so there will, so there'll be like a co-sac where he can stay in, like during the winter time?
A kiosk. Yes, John, that's correct. There's the ability to shelter adjacent to the fuel facility.
Yeah, if I may clarify, Steve Glawacki from O'Connell and Associates, is what in Massachusetts is referred to as a clerk in the loop, and in Massachusetts, one of the unique things about that is whether or not it's self-serve, it's self-serve, as this gas is, a clerk still has to initiate that sale, so there is a kiosk, as John Harder pointed out, that's sitting in the midst of those aisles, and it's also a warming hut, but in the, you know, when someone comes up and swipes their card, it dings, and then, and then the, and then the attendant will initiate the sale. If you've ever been at a self-serve gas station, you'll pull it, and you'll sometimes wait a second for someone inside a kiosk to initiate the sale. That's what it is, it's a clerk in the loop. So, there will be, besides an attendant on-site to help, you know, maneuver traffic should have been needed, there'll also be the clerk in the loop to initiate those sales, and there's a small kiosk for that. there'll also be the clerk in the loop to initiate those sales, and there's a small kiosk for that.
I know a little bit about pumping kiosks.
I know, I don't mean to interrupt your time, but...
Okay, Marguerite.
So you mentioned the 28 feet between the pumps. I just, I brought my wrong materials tonight, which is actually, I think, one of the first times I've done that. Was that the plan last time that you presented to us, or was that changed?
Current standard now.
Okay, so that was always been planned for, great, thanks.
Emile, did you have any questions?
No questions, I know.
Okay. Okay, anybody in the audience have any questions? What's the wish of the board?
So I don't have my notes from last time, so I don't remember if we talked about any conditions. We need to get the letters anyways into the record, so, I mean, I'm happy to draft a decision and incorporate any conditions we had talked about for next time, and then maybe if we continue and vote on it when we receive all those materials. I know it's a little different than our usual practice, but I don't have any conditions from tonight's conversation, but I feel like we probably had some last time.
The condition, if it's helpful.
Yeah.
The conditions I had from last time were it would be, that there would be no diesel fuel at this facility. Let me just pull back my notes.
You're still holding for it?
We, we, we've agreed to that, and we are, we will do that.
And the hours of operation?
The hours of operation, I believe we had from 6:30 to one hour after closing. John Alvarado, is that correct?
6:00 AM. 6:00 AM to one hour after closing.
That's correct.
Seven days a week.
Yes, exactly. One hour after closing, yes.
Those were the two you had?
Those were the two that I had, I'm just double checking one of them.
I think it's, I think it's stock all four lanes. They have adding 22 parking, did we add any parking or?
If I may, the, the adjustments to the plan did come at the expense of some of the spaces. However, they were the most remote spaces that many will argue were somewhat useless to the plan because it would be the last spaces used. So, for instance, John had mentioned the spaces at the ingress aisle, which are now eliminated. So essentially, it's a, it's a, it's a wash in parking in terms of how it's presented. Though I will say, we, one of the things that we've done here, which is less critical to the gas, is we've pushed the exterior drive to the edge of the parking area so that there's no longer a gap with this small satellite lot to the south of the access drive. So all the parking is now to the north of the access drive closer to the front entry of the store. So we believe that will help from a parking perspective for the warehouse itself. Again, not necessarily germane to the gas, but that's one of the improvements we tried to make on site.
Well, that's a ten of motion.
So, I mean, I guess my motion would be to continue, but I'm happy to draft, because we need the, we need the documents in. I'm happy to draft a decision in the meantime that incorporates the conditions and any others I find in my notes, so that at the next meeting, we can review and adopt it instead of having two meetings.
Right.
Because typically, we would have to have another meeting to finalize a decision anyways.
Right, we can vote to okay it, but we're going to be drafting the decision anyway, so it wouldn't be approved till the next meeting anyways.
Would we have an opportunity to review the draft of the decision? The reason why I ask that would be, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and if I can get to it ahead of time, I'm happy to share it with Jack and...
Like you do so many.
Then, just timing-wise, I, I know that there's a large 40B project that's before the board, so that can, that can sort of cramp the, the schedule, and I'm assuming that takes up the whole nights when it's there. Is, is there a hearing date that's available that we could agree to? Is the 6th available, or is that, is that realistic?
So, tell me what's available.
June 6th.
That's our next meeting anyways.
That's your next, that's your next meeting, the 40B is not until the 20th.
And I'm actually not going to be here on the 20th, no.
Which one?
The 20th.
Sure.
Sorry.
Got to shut that off.
And just so I understand, it's the typical, sort of, the board votes to approve, and then you have another approval for the decision itself? And we're just rolling that into a single, possibly a single here? Understood, understood.
So I'm not, I mean, I, I realize we aren't officially taking the vote tonight, but I'm not trying to delay further.
And there'll be no need for us to re-present or have anything else ready?
No, other than we need those documents from the submission letters from the police and fire.
And like, as I mentioned on that one, I don't know if, do you want, I don't know if we, we can ask to have a response email from the, the safety officer just to say, you know, we've now, now we've met with the board again, we represented what we had discussed, you know, please reply to this email.
Yeah, I think that's helpful for us to have in our record.
Happy to do so.
So...
Mr. Conley's got nothing else to do.
So my motion is to continue to June 6th. Is it 7:30? Do we have something on?
7:32.
7:32.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Poll, right? We have to poll because Emile is...
He just...
I know, but we have to poll our names, so aye, Marguerite, Mitchell. Sorry.
Jeff?
Aye.
Sherman? Aye.
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Emile?
Aye.
Thank you all very much, and we'll see you on the 6th.
Do you think they'll have to be here for the 6th?
Well, I assume they're going to want to, just confirm the decision looks like what we're saying at all.
Adam, I'm going to, you'll see me, I'll be here for that, thank you.
I don't think you need your whole team.
I think it'd just be me, thank you very much, appreciate it.
He's working a lot of gas coming from New York.
Glad Marguerite's here.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, I'm just a visual person.
Happy to see. Actually, we're seeing her that much. Thank you so much.
No, this is fine. Yeah, we have to talk about that. Thank you.
If it was, oh, who was I?
That's not Barry, is it?
Who's that?
Yeah, that's Barry.
40B. Barry.
How do I get up to this?
How do you roll on 20th? How do you roll on 20th?
Escape? Do you have an escape? There you go, and then you can exit. There you go.
Okay. All in favor of motion, open case number 4306, 4308?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Sherman? Aye.
Aye.
Gary? Marguerite?
Aye.
Emile?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing will be held in Town Hall, oh, wait.
Yeah, we, okay. No, we haven't done this one yet.
No, but, yeah, I know, but I, I just think I can. Public hearing will be held in the Town Hall, Conference Room B, Room 301, third floor, 10 Pearl Street on May 16th, 2024, at 7:32 PM on a petition of Barry Siegel, Siegel Associates of New Jersey, represented by Benjamin Robin, case number 4308, for special permit under the Town of Stoughton zoning bylaw of November 18th, 2015, as amended Section 3.0 Use Regulations, 3.1.4 Table of Use Regulations, Section 3.1.4 Table of Use Regulations. Accessory use, item number 17, accessory retail store in an industrial or warehouse building providing it is selling its own products in order to allow for a sale of the United Rentals products located at 155 Maple Street. Further identified in accessories plan 94 Lot 55 in an industrial zone in Stoughton. Any person desiring to receive further notice concerning this petition as provided by the general rules of the Zoning Board of Appeal should file a written request containing his or her name and address with the board. Petitioner, representative, or any other person desiring to be heard in this matter should appear at time and place designated. Sherman, upro chairman, it was in the Patriot legend, May 1st and May 24.
Motion to allow waive the reading of the ordinance and to take the answer to question A is written?
Second.
All in favor? Jeff?
Aye.
Sherman, aye. Gary? Marguerite?
Aye.
Emile?
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to explain what you'd like to do.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Commissioner, and Madam Administrator. My name is John Conley. I, for the record, I live at 37 Chapman Street in Canton. I've been with United Rentals for over 25 years. But my, often me was born and raised in Stoughton. My mother was from Stoughton High School class in 1941, I'm very proud of that. And so I would, I like to mention that, she's, she's here, she was, she's passed, but she's here. So Stoughton's near and dear to me, so I like to bring that up because the Black Knights are, even though I'm a bulldog, the Black Knights are very, are very near and dear to my heart. So this is John Vasconcellis, he's the manager of 155 Maple Street. He's been with United for...
22 years.
22 years. And we purchased a business that was 155 Maple Street, and we renovated it for a tune of almost 1.8 million. And we'd like to sell accessories, we basically, we have scissor lifts, spoons, construction equipment, nothing heavy, we have a heavy division on 138 in Canton. But this is like the smaller things, and we have a showroom in the, in the office, and John can tell you, we make gloves, tools, things of that nature, along with offices. And we'd just like to, as a retail market, we're not open on weekends, and we'll open 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So that's, can answer any questions you may have, or John can answer, or whatever, whatever you feel appropriate.
Jeff? Can you just tell me a little bit about your, your business? You know, I understand that you're, you're selling equipment and supplies.
Basically, 90% of it is rentals.
Rentals, okay.
Rentals, like scissor lifts, spoons, back, backhoes, front-end loaders, most of it's rentals.
So on, and I understand you said, you know, Monday through Friday, probably 7 to 5. What's the, the typical volume that you would expect on a, on a, any given business day?
Well, not as much as we'd like, let's put it that way right now.
Fair enough, okay.
Business is low, business isn't as busy as it used to be, right? Business is slow. We also have, just for the record, we have a, an office in Braintree, one in Canton. I said two in Braintree, I should say, one in Canton, and several in Boston, the Boston surrounding towns, cities, Boston surrounding cities. So to answer your question, some days are busy, like, we'll have like a half a dozen tractor trailers going out, and rollback trucks go out every morning, and they come back and pick the equipment up that's been called off rent, and then they'll come back to the yard, go out for a second delivery, and they come and go, and go and come, and, you know, right off the, basically to 24, they go either south down to Totten, Fall River and that area, or into Boston.
And I think on, I think on the, on the permit side of things with the, the merchandise is what we call it. Typically, it's, it's just a complement to what we do, our business aspect, you know, if the town comes into, Town of Stoughton comes in to run a plate compactor while they're running, they need a set of gloves or safety vest, you know, stuff like that. Most of the time, it's stuff that we're sending out with one of our trucks. So when they go to deliver a machine to the customer, they need a cutoff blade or something of that nature. It's just, just the small items that we use to complement that. You know, it's nothing really, you know, out of the ordinary that like HD, not HD supply, but the place down the corner of our street.
Oh, White Cap.
White Cap. It's kind of similar stuff to them, they carry different lines, different products, different manufacturers, stuff like that. But it's cutoff saws, saw blades, safety glasses, hard hats, safety vests, you know, de-watering hoses, small submersible pumps, items of, of that nature.
Yeah, water coolers.
But I think in terms of volume of traffic, I think you might have alluded to this before, it's, you usually have a busy time in the morning, the equipment's out, it's making money, comes home at the, at the night.
Yeah, so our, our, our volume, truck-wise, isn't going to change from what it's been prior to the, the company that was there to where we are today. It's pretty much the same on that side. In rela, in relation to this, I don't, we've been, we've been there now for 12 months. The walk-in business has increased, but it's mainly people that are coming in to pick up a trailer, a skid steer, or an excavator. I sit at the front counter, so we probably see 10, 15 people a day. It's not hundreds, it's not Costco volume by any means. You know, like Johnny said, it's not where we would like to see it, but even our busiest location in Boston, which does a tremendous amount of this kind of walk-in business, I don't even think you'd see an increase in, you know, if it was monitored, it would be minimal compared to what it is today. You know?
And just my own curiosity, what, what kind of business was at this location before?
It, it was an equipment rental business, it was Ahearn Rentals. We purchased, yeah, we purchased Ahearn back in December of '22. They had that location, so we, we scooped that up. We were looking for a location in the area, and this came up, so we just moved, moved in there, renovated the place, the place is a mess, I'm not sure if, I know you were in there during construction, but it was a mess. So compared to where it was then till today, it's actually pretty impressive, it looks pretty good.
I've been in there, I will attest to that. I'm a wiring inspector, yes.
I think that's, that's a lot of really helpful context. You called me first, Sherman, that's kind of the only question I have right now, I might, I might have another one later, but that is helpful, thank you.
Try to answer. I don't have any questions. Marguerite?
So this, are you selling this, these products right now, or not yet?
We, we sell, so what we'll do is we have other stores that we'll pull stuff in from to sell it. You know, if a customer says, hey, I need a cutoff saw, we'll bring it in and have it for them when they come to get it. I mean, the last thing we want to do is turn anybody away where we're trying to, you know, increase that volume. So that's pretty much where we are today. Again, it's not where we need it to be, but...
So these, but these shelves aren't stocked yet, there's some that walk in off the street and buy something?
Some of those shelves have some stuff on them today. Only reason we did, I did that is because I'm running out of places to put the stuff that we have in Conex boxes so we can sell it. You know, there's only so much, I'm kind of exploding at the seams.
The plan was to get this permit before you really...
Well, we didn't really realize, I mean, and I don't want to talk out of school, but several neighboring companies have the permits already. We, Sherman and I, we didn't realize we needed them.
I didn't know, too.
Yeah, you know, Sherman and I, because White Cap down the street, the gas, the Kenworth deal, they'll have retail permits, correct?
Yeah, it's all special permit.
Yeah, special permit, yeah, thank you. So we did, we...
Kenworth deal was gone, it's good year.
Yes.
And then your, in your application, it indicated that you expected it just to be your existing customer base, but you're not, if somebody came in off the street, is that, is that still a market that you may pick up?
It, it can be, I mean, it's not a heavy volume of traffic like 158 would be, or Central Street in Stoughton. Maple Street's the cut through. Obviously, you go to the PJs or wherever, you know, and White Cap, White Cap is before us, it used to be the old Modern Continental Building, and so we do have some, we have some to increase, but not a lot, I wouldn't say. It's not, there's no sidewalks up there, so we wouldn't have any walk-in service, walk-in customs, excuse me.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Emile, you have any questions?
No questions.
I have another question. Would you be servicing the equipment at this location, or just kind of storing it and...
No, so we're, we're a full, full-service rental facility. So we rent, we, we sell, you know, the heavy equipment if there's, if there's a need for it. And then there's also a repair aspect to it as well. Most of the sale stuff typically, typically the way we are, we handle the equipment sales is basically wherever the equipment lands, so if the piece is in Boston and you... So, if the piece is in Boston and you want to buy it, typically it comes from that Boston location to you. We're, we're still trying to develop what we have and kind of get our feet on the ground as to what direction we want to focus on. A lot of that stuff stays Braintree, Canton, you know, one of the two Boston locations. And basically, what we'll do is if the customer wants to buy it, they'll go look at it, that store will sell it, deliver it to the customer, and then go from there. You know, there's a lot of moving parts with, with what we do on a daily basis. I'm not sure if that answers your question or not.
Like scissor lifts and things, they come back, they have to be, by Oceanian regulations, they have to be inspected. When they come off a drop site, say it goes to your drop site, and then you're done with it, you send, we pick it up, and ask it to go to Jack's drop site, or to another drop site, we have to do an inspection to make sure it's, it's safe. So, we do equipment repairs, small equipment repairs, or anything of that nature. But the one in Braintree, it's 131 Messina Drive, we, it's a huge facility, 7 acres out back, so, and got grain and things of that nature. So, we take them from Braintree to Canton, to Stoughton, to Boston.
Okay, so more, more like routine maintenance and repairs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing heavy duty. And then the shop on 138 in Canton, the old Cassidy and Lee, that's our heavy earth-moving equipment. So, that's where all of those items are stored there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Jack, is there any other zoning relief that, for the business that they're operating?
No, they've been operating. They, they got this CVO, they're up and running. Everything they just talked about is allowed with their use. The only thing was the retail piece.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure this was it.
And we did apply early as soon as we could-
Yep.
-to get in here before you folks, because I know that we have to abide by the rules, and some people don't, but sooner or later, we're talking a ton of stuff. I mean, and also service.
Let me just reiterate. So, you're going to be open 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, no Saturdays? You don't, don't plan on opening like half a day Saturday?
Another big dig comes, but we don't anticipate it right now.
The, the Saturdays are really more for homeowner business, and we got away from that years ago. So, we just, with Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 5:00, 7:00 to 4:00, depending on the, on daylight savings.
Going in competition with every one of the stores there.
Oh, it is, it is. There's competition.
What's the wish of the board?
Are you here for this case?
No, they're for the next one.
I mean, we have one condition, right? I don't have a problem supporting this.
No.
Okay.
So, what's the- I'll make a motion, we go at the special permit.
The hours?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Go at the special permit for the retail use with the hours as stated.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor? Jeff?
Aye.
Sherman, yep. Gary?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Emil?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
We'll, we'll draft the decision, and then hopefully we'll have it for the next meeting, and then Jack will get over here.
I don't-
Thank you.
I don't remember doing anything like this.
I probably have a template, this one's probably pretty straightforward.
There's a lot of-
If you have one, send it off.
Yeah, send it, if you don't mind, because then I will try to take the other one.
How you guys? Podcast.
Of course I'll take the easier one.
Oh, yes.
What a guy, huh?
I live in Podcast.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have one in Podcast, yes. Yeah, that's right.
It's fine, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie Walsh outside.
Eddie Walsh outside.
Yes. Thank you, thank you.
Eddie, John.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
My, my brother says hi. Thank you.
Okay, we have a request for an extension. Special permit. I don't have the number of the permit.
4275.
2275?
42.
Oh, 42.
4275.
Oh.
Motion to open case number 4275. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Sherman, yep. Gary? Marguerite?
Aye.
Emil?
Aye.
Okay. Dear Honorable Members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, the firm represents Exteria Escape Services, Inc. Hereafter the applicant, in connection with this application for a special permit from the Town of Stoughton, Zoning Board of Appeal, the board to allow for storage of vehicles, equipment, and other materials for the operation and conduct of proposed landscaping business on the property. The project, Exteria Escape, received a special permit from the board for this use on June 17, 2022, which was not applied, appealed by anyone. Unfortunately, Exteria Escape has not been able to commence construction of the project or the use for which the special permit was granted because of the pending wetlands approvals from the Stoughton Conservation Commission. The project was before the Conservation Commission for the issuance of a required wetlands approval for over a year. The Conver, Conver, yeah, Conservation Commission denied approval under the Wetlands Protection Act, which was appealed to the Department of Environmental Protection, who recently issued a superseding order of conditions authorizing the project. The Conservation Commission also denied approval under the local wetland bylaws, which was subject to an, of an appeal that's pending in North Fork Superior Court. Absent the wetlands approvals, Exteria Escape has not been able to commence the use in pursuant to the section 10.5.7, the special permit will lapse if the use is not commenced by June 17, 2024. Therefore, Exteria Escape requested an extension for the special permit for an additional year to June 17, 2025. The requested extension will permit resolution of the Conservation Commission appeal and commencement to be permitted use. For the foregoing reason, the applicant respectfully requests the board grant the requested one-year extension of the special permit and such other relief as the board deems necessary to allow the construction and operation of the applicant's landscape contractor's yard. Sincerely, Ian Sobolowski.
Something, yeah.
Okay.
Ian wasn't able to make it tonight, but Maggie's on the screen there.
Okay.
Fun.
What's the wish of the board here?
I have a question. So, has the special permit been recorded?
Special permit from you guys?
The special-
Yes, the one we issued.
I will read that to her, I'm not sure.
It has not been recorded.
So, the condition that we have requires both the operation or the exercise of the special permit and the fact that it be recorded under condition three? So, I want to make sure that that's within your full understanding at this stage, if we're going to extend it. I mean, there's no reason not to have recorded it. We need both to be done, or it lapses under our, the condition of the special permit.
Okay. So, you'd like us to record it in order to grant the extension?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying I don't mind granting the extension, although should have, there's no reason it shouldn't have been recorded by now, but it definitely needs to be recorded.
Okay, understood, thank you.
I don't know if we have not recorded it, because I don't actually own the property yet. We're still under our Ninth Amendment right now of extensions on the contract for me purchasing the property, so maybe, I'm just guessing, maybe that's why it wasn't recorded.
It could be. I don't know for sure if they would allow you to record it without having ownership of the property. I haven't actually tried that at the registry.
Not sure either.
Yeah. So, if that's the case, but it needs, both need to happen within, like, this is the one-year extension period that you get under the law, so it's both pieces that have to happen.
Okay.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion that we extend the special permit in case number, what's our case number?
4275.
4275 through June 17, 2025, provided that by that date, the petitioner complies with all of the conditions, including but not limited to the condition to record the special permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Emil?
Aye.
Okay. You're all set, but you, but you have to record, you either have to buy it and record it, or-
I'm hoping that I'm close. It's been a three-year process, so I'm hoping, I'm still fighting here. See how much fight I still have.
You can't get another extension. You're only allowed one extension.
I understand.
You know, we're not trying to be mean, but I mean, that's just the law.
It's telling me how it is.
So, you'll, you'll have to start all over again.
Is someone going to draft that up for us? I know Mary used to.
The which?
That extension. Is, are we going to get that drafted, Jack, do you know?
You want me to ask Kristen?
Yeah. I mean, Mary should have templates of stuff like that, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay. Because I assume they're going to need that to go along with, you'll need that as part of what you record at the registry, for purposes of title. So, I'll make a motion that Sherman signs on behalf of the board, the approved extension that was just granted.
Second. All in favor? Jeff?
Aye.
Sherman, no. Gary?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Emil?
Aye.
That's it. That's it. Okay.
The only thing I want to bring up is that I'm not going to be here on the 20th now, and I guess that's the day Hebrew Senior Life was postponed, so.
They're going to make some serious changes.
I'm up there about to be in a town meeting member, so I don't know if that's something, I mean, they don't technically need me on the petition, but if that's something that we're looking to have the petitioner be made aware of. I did let Kristen know, I discovered that I had a patent. So, I think they still officially have to appear and ask for a postponement, because it was a comprehensive permit that's open as a public hearing, but I just wanted to make everyone aware I won't be here that night. I don't know if we want to try to schedule another June meeting instead.
I'm sure there's going to be another one anyway.
But we have a six, but-
Oh, yeah. There was, there's one on the restroom, though.
Okay.
Well, no, no, we're not, we're not adjourned yet.
I didn't think so.
In August, we usually have one meeting, and I'm not around the first week.
I'm not around the second week.
Well, it's the third week.
22nd, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't Kristen say tonight, she wanted you to be 18th or something?
Yeah. Marguerite's not going to be here, but yeah, we don't, there's nothing on the schedule yet anyways, right?
Or August?
No.
No.
There will be, there's people, there's a lot of stuff coming in.
Okay, so I'm, I could be, we could do the 22nd in August.
Yeah, that's fine.
I won't be around here.
Be here on the 22nd? We don't usually, do we usually not meet in July?
No, we have one meeting in July and one, one in August.
July 4th is Thursday.
So, we're not meeting on July 4th?
Correct.
That's a holiday, so it'll be the 18th?
Yep.
Okay, that's, that I can do.
Well, we can make it any meet, we can make it any Thursday in July and any Thursday in August.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't have to be-
So, the 18th works for me, in July.
Okay.
Does it work for you, Emil?
I have no plans as of right now, so yes.
I may not be here, but Kristen can handle it. Okay. But in August, it looks like we're struggling to find a Thursday, unless we start, unless we go to the 29th. Which works.
That's probably way over the weekend. No, it isn't.
I don't know when we're-
It's right before.
Labor Day.
Yeah, Labor Day. Because you're away the 8th, I'm away the 15th, and Jeff, you're away the 22nd?
15th and 22nd.
No. Or the 1st.
Well, hopefully, hopefully we'll have some people, too.
Yeah.
And they, they-
I know, the 1st, I could do the 1st.
And they posted it wrong.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
They posted the last year, too.
They posted one regular member and one alternate.
I thought there were five alternates.
We have five alternates.
I'm just telling you what I saw on the website.
You wouldn't know it looking at us, but we're supposed to have five alternates.
I'm just telling you what was on the website.
Okay.
So, obviously, yes, we got to, we got to fill my position, and we got to fill Dan's position.
Right. So, is Emil, are you officially an alternate still?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, Gary's position's open.
We'll have to talk about that.
Okay, well, I'm around on the 1st or the 29th of August.
I'll go 29th.
But that's right before Labor Day, is that going to be in it? When are you off the board officially, Gary?
June.
I already told them that I would stay.
Okay, so should we, I don't want to cut into your Labor Day. Would you, is there a chance you'll be away?
No, no, we're going, we're, we're down the Cape, when are we down on the Cape? I think it's the first two weeks in September, and then we're, we're on a cruise on the first week of August.
Nice. So, would you rather go the 29th?
Yeah, I don't care.
That's fine.
I mean, if I have to come up, I'm only a sandwich, so.
So, we probably need to take a motion to hold our meeting on those days, right?
Um.
Because it's not our typical, the 29th isn't our typical day.
Yeah, but why don't we wait till-
Yeah, we can wait until June for that.
Till August 28th, August 28th.
But then my next question is, do we want to set another meeting in June? Because I'm not here on the 27th, and Hebrew Senior Life was scheduled for that night.
Let's find out what they, let's talk to Barry and find out what they want to do, because if they're changing everything, or-
And now we know what days of July will be? Just one, or, yeah.
Yeah, on the 18th, yeah. Yeah, on the eighteenth, yeah.
Because I could do, well, yeah, because Todd's gonna go. I won't go, Todd will go to that. I could do the 27th.
Of July?
Of June.
Of June.
Would you do the 27th?
I could do the 27th, I would prefer the 27th over the 20th, if that matters.
And that's the only thing on on the 20th?
Yes, the Hebrew's the only one on.
I mean, I don't mind voting to have a meeting for the 27th and then canceling it if Hebrew Senior Life doesn't want it.
You're gonna notify everybody?
Yeah, that's one, that's a, that's a big meeting.
Well, that's why I'd rather vote for it now and then, and then they come in and they postpone to the next week. But in the meantime, we've notified people.
Yeah, it'd be better to notify them now, give them like a month's notice.
Right, no, no, I understand.
Right.
I'll try to get ahold of Barry tomorrow, but if that's what you want to do, that's fine. We have nothing else on the 22nd, right?
You mean the 20th?
20th, right.
No.
So strictly...
The Hebrew, trying to just try to keep it that way for you guys.
I'll try to get ahold of Barry tomorrow and see if he can change the date. He won't make it to 27.
So should we take a motion to set another zoning board meeting for June 27th?
Sure.
I'll make a motion, I make a motion, we set a meeting at 7:30 on June 27th, the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting.
All in favor?
Second. I'm a team player.
Jeff?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Emile?
Aye.
Hopefully he'll be in your office. Okay.
It's Friday.
I know.
It's Friday.
Huh?
Barry won't be in his office anymore.
He won't be in at all?
But I can call him.
All right, you want to try to call him?
Yeah, I'm trying to give him. So you guys are looking at the sixth and the 27th and not the 20th at all, no?
I mean, they'll have to, he might have to show up because it's a public hearing and postpone.
I'll send somebody in.
Yeah, at the actual meeting, so there'll need to be a quorum. Three of you have to show up on Zoom or something. But if we at least let people know, we get the word out, then hopefully members of the public won't show up.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't have to worry about a few of them.
And we can, you know, on our, whatever on our posting that we have, we can say, anticipate this continuing to the, whatever day Barry decides. It's either gonna be the 27th or the 18th of July.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I mean, we can finalize the conversation more at the next meeting too, make it clear.
Yep.
And put it on our agenda that we, if we want to add this to the agenda next week or for the next meeting, Jack, if Kristen wants to put that on, confirmation about whether we're going to maintain a meeting on the 27th of June for Hebrew Senior Life?
Whether or not we're gonna have it on the 20th?
27th, too.
27th is what you guys want to have.
Right. Yeah, 20th or 27th, however, talk about both, put it as an agenda item, so at least anyone who's paying attention to this. Try to get the word out as much as we can.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Jeff? Aye. Kind of wait to be called.
He knows his turn.
Gary?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Emile?
Aye.
Aye.